It is 6:30 and so it's time to call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. And let the roll call show that all members of the council are present with the exception of Mayor Winter who has asked to be excused. And joining us on the dais tonight representing the staff is City Manager Wayne Pyle. And doing the recording duties is our esteemed city recorder, Ms. Sherri McHenry. Just by way of order, we'll immediately following the city council meeting, we will be having a brief West Valley City redevelopment agency meeting as soon as this meeting is concluded. By way of opening ceremony, this is a task that we take turns as council members to set the tone and start off the meeting. And tonight's opening ceremony fell to Mayor Winter who has arranged to have Pastor Darrell Evans of Oasis Vineyard come. And so Pastor, would you come up? The floor is yours.
Good evening. I'm here to open the prayer tonight, so if you don't mind us far ahead. Lord, we invite your presence. We ask for your wisdom, your guidance. I pray, Father, that as your word exhorts us to pray for those in authority in our government, our city, I pray that your wisdom would be here, your grace, your attitude towards the best for our people. And we just pray for your wisdom again, your guidance, your understanding. And we pray for this time. We submit it to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. It's noted that Pastor Evans is a West Valley resident and serves the community. And we thank you for your invocation as well as your service. There are no special recognitions tonight, which usually is for visiting dignitaries or scouts, which we hold in equal esteem. And so seeing none of them, we'll move on to item number five, which is the approval of our regular meeting minutes from March 27, 2012, council members.
Motion to approve the approval of minutes, March 27, 2012.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the March 27 meeting minutes as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It appears to be unanimous. From time to time, we like to invite all new employees into the council chamber to be introduced. And so with that, we'll turn the time over to City Manager Wayne Pyle for the introduction of our new employees.
Okay, thank you, sir. I get an unusual opportunity tonight. Paul is down in St. George representing me at a conference. And I don't think Amy or anybody from the HR office is here, so I'm gonna actually do the introductions tonight. And not knowing beforehand I was gonna do this, hopefully I won't mispronounce anybody's name, but if I do, I apologize beforehand. And what we'd like you to do is if any of the employees that are here that are, whose names I call up, if you would just please stand and be recognized, we can see who you are and welcome here to the city. We would like to do that and recognize you. I'd also just like to add the comment that we're very proud of our employee group and we recruit and we develop very good people and we enjoy and love having them. I know that's a big part of the enjoyment of my job that I have is working with these folks every day. So welcome to the city. Okay, from Public Works, we have Michael Haskell and Jeffrey Peterson. Are either of you here? Oh, thanks very. Both of you are, that's right. Very good. Nice to have you here. From Fire, we have Alex Grazer. Ah, just met Alex out in the hall, but didn't realize he was brand new. Nice to have you with us there. From Legal, we've got Daniel Strong.
What?
Daniel, how are ya? Community Preservation, we've got Catherine Hills and Andre Gamaros. Very good. Thank you very much. Hope I didn't mess up either of your names there. And for Police, we have Carly James, Hannah Prigmire, and Julie Smith. Okay, they're not with us tonight, but we extend the same welcome to them as well. So thanks very much again. Appreciate you taking a few minutes to be here this evening. And thanks for the efforts and contribution you're gonna make to our city. Appreciate it. Okay, Mayor?
Thank you. And we, as the city council, welcome you to the West Valley City family and hope that you find successes and joys in your serving. And this is where we institute the intelligence test and where we give you the option to leave if you so desire, but you are welcome to stay to see how the meeting goes. But again, welcome. Okay, we have a couple of very special awards ceremonies tonight. And so, Mr. Pyle, do you want to turn the time over to or give any introductory comments to item A, which is the Utah Recreations and Parks Association?
Mr. Mayor, for Tim, what I'll do is just turn the mic over to Kevin for a sec if he wants to make any introduction.
Okay, thanks, you guys. Who we have here with us tonight is the president, or past president of the Utah Recreation and Parks Association, Kim Olson. At our recent conference, awards were given out and we were fortunate enough to be the recipient of one of the coveted awards. So Kim will present that to us tonight.
Hey, Mayor Protim and honorable members of the city council. It's great to be here with you. I am Kim Olson. I'm currently the Executive Director of the Utah Recreation and Park Association. We are a nonprofit professional association of all the recreation parks and leisure professionals in the state of Utah. We are also the state affiliate of the National Recreation Parks Association, which has our headquarters back in Washington DC. Over 19,000 members that we lobby through Congress for and other areas for parks and recreation issues. Anyway, one of our major activities here in the state is an annual conference where we have training, classes, opportunities for people to network and learn about others in recreation. But we also like to recognize some of the excellent programs within the state. We always, each year, we present an outstanding department. There are three divisions, one, two, and three. Three is 50,000 and over. And this year, after examining your department here in West Valley City, all aspects of their programming, their facilities, the way they do things, a lot of their staff and expertise they have, our judges selected West Valley City as the outstanding department, Class Three for 2012. Mayor, if you'd like to come, I'd like to present this to you on behalf of the Recreation Park Association, and then you can possibly present it to your staff.
Okay, congratulations.
I'd like to just one more thing. Usually, when you're selected for an award from your peers, they know what you do, they know what goes into it, and I think this means even more coming from your peers than some outside group. So this is truly an honor for your department.
Thank you. Do you wanna call them? I will. I think they're all, or... I'm gonna show you my Parks and Rec acumen by jumping back up here. And we have a number of members from our Parks and Recreation Department here, and it might probably be appropriate if they would stand up and be known, make themselves known. So these are the faces of West Valley City Parks and Rec. And they do a fabulous job year over year, and I'm sure they'll find a, present this over to Parks Director Kevin Astle. I'm sure they'll find a place of honor down at one of our many recreation facilities and enjoy it for years to come. And also, it'll be a standard for them to continue their high works from. So thank you. Okay, we do have another special recognition tonight, and this comes from, all the way, I guess, from Washington DC in some regards, because we have Senator Mike Lee's Deputy State Director Bill Lee here. And so Bill, we'll turn the time over to you at this point in recognition of our city police officers receiving the Utah Gang Unit of the Year Award.
Thank you. It's great to be here in your city. Mayor Protim and the city council and also members of the city, it's an honor to be here and to recognize good things that happen in a world sometimes where it's filled with things that are not so pleasant and they get pushed around all over the place. Senator Mike Lee has engaged us to look for things that are done well. And so with that, with those that are gonna receive that, the law enforcement, if they would come up as our... Somebody here to receive that?
Yep.
It's recognition for West Valley City and their gang task force. And when the thing that says in here, "For the dedication and bravery of Utah law enforcement personnel exemplifies the best in Utah." And so with that, the senator would like to present this to your city, to your task force for a job well done.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you for that very special recognition, Mr. Lee. And we appreciate the works and the partnerships that we've had with the Senator's office and will continue to have. Item C is a proclamation designating April 16, 2012 through April 20 as Community Development Block Grant Week here in West Valley City. And we've asked Councilmember Steve Beeler, representing District Two, to read that proclamation on our behalf. Councilman?
Thank you. A proclamation designating April 16, 2012 through April 20, 2012 as Community Development Block Grant Week. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program was enacted and signed into law by President Gerald Ford as the centerpiece of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. And whereas the CDBG program has as its primary objective, the development of viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment and expanding economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. And whereas the CDBG program has considerable flexibility to allow communities to carry out activities that are tailored to their unique affordable housing and neighborhood revitalization needs. And whereas West Valley City, with CDBG funds in the approximate amount of $24,84,145 since 1989, has provided for low moderate income housing for families and seniors, parks, streets, public services, and neighborhood services. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, do hereby proclaim the week of April 16, 2012 through April 20, 2012 as Community Development Block Grant Week and encourage all citizens to join together in expressing support for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you, Councilman. At this point in time, if there's no objections, I'd like to go back on the agenda on special recognitions, as I see two scouts have joined us here, two familiar looking scouts. And I presume they're working on a merit badge. And so what we like to do is know a little bit about them, who they are, why they're here, what troop you're from, and roughly what part of the city you live in, which sometimes is best accomplished by stating what school you come to, so what school you attend. And so is there one of the boys designated spokesman or patrol, senior patrol leader that would like to be spokesman for this group? Come on up here to the microphone so we can get a better look at ya, and then, and all the people that are watching on Channel 17 or on the internet can get a good look at the back of your head.
I'm Adam Nelson. Come from, I go to County Junior High. I'm from the Troop Town, 6th City.
And are you working on the requirement tonight?
Working on community and the citizenship in the community.
Okay, well, welcome. Thanks for being here tonight, and I hope it's an educational experience for ya. And so now we'll turn to item seven, which is our public comment period. And this is the time we set aside each meeting to allow comments from members of the public. And we have a half hour set aside, and we have a sign up sheet. So Josh Sherman is alone, signed up. And so Josh has been here before, and if you wanna come up and state your name and address, and then we'll start your five minutes or so.
Thank you. My name is Josh Sherman. I'm at 3919 South, 4800 West, West Valley City, 4120. And I couldn't be with a better group of individuals tonight. The scout, working on the citizenship in the community, standing very bad right here. And Park and Recs, which I champion, thank you for coming here and being here. Thank you for what you do as well, all of you. And to the two new city council members, Karen, we met last week, and then Tom, pleasure to meet you. For everyone else, and for the mayor, and Wayne, and Kevin Astle, and everyone else here, it's out of hibernation time, so I've come to talk to you again. Actually, sorry, forgot my message. So if I can indulge you, just for five minutes, I timed this to down to five minutes, and so I hope not to exceed that amount of time. So for everyone else, thank you for indulging me as well. For the last 10 years, I've come before the city council and hope that I can in some way persuade the city council and the city of West Valley to build a skate park in the city where I was born and raised. Shortly after the Olympics, I attended the meeting and asked Mayor Norfeld to help fund a skate park. At the time, I turned out, as it turned out, one was already being partially funded by the ZAP program in the city. In 2004, the skate park was designed and shovel ready. Unfortunately, due to comments made by the Tattersville mayor that were overheard by Mayor Norfeld, funding was pulled. To date, the skate park remains at the bottom of the city's project list. In 2010, another opportunity was presented, Proposition Three, a $25 million open space bond was introduced by the city council. If passed, it would have funded 17 new neighborhood parks, 27 miles of trails, and a four to seven acre community village square. Also included was funding to build a skate park. At the time, I skateboarded around my neighborhood and various other neighborhoods distributing pamphlets that detailed the improvements and conveying the message that we were, as a city, investing in future generations in the open spaces of West Valley City. Unfortunately, the voted, the public voted against the increase in property taxes and the proposal was voted down. Over the past 15 years, while we've struggled to find funding for a city skate park, 52 other cities in our state have managed to vote on and fund city skate parks in their respective areas. I've written to many of the mayors and Park and Recreation Departments of each of these cities. In some cases, there were issues with citizens' expenses, but each response I've received has made two things very clear. The governing party was in favor of the decision, and they feel it's been a solid investment for the city. And I've included those letters into the pamphlet I gave you as well. In 2011, the total revenue for West Valley City was $63 million, which although down from previous years, increased with the growth of our city for the last 10 years. Our total revenue managed, manages the second largest city in the state. A third of that budget goes to the police at $20 million, which I do respect, but it's a lot of money. Unfortunately, Park and Recreation is at the very bottom of the budget, just above legislative expenditures, at 1.6 million. We've managed to implement some incredible recreational sites. In 1991, the city voted to build the first public golf course called West Ridge, which is currently under construction and slated to open in 2013. In 1997, the citizens of West Valley began to pay for the construction of the E Center, which houses indoor soccer, football, wrestling, figure skating, concerts, and is the home to most notably the Utah Grizzlies. Before the Y2K scare, the citizens also put up the bond to build the Centennial Park, complete with impressive fitness center, indoor, outdoor swimming, two quad softball facilities, tennis courts, soccer fields, basketball, climbing wall, and a rugby field. Having seen the host of the world's best hockey players during the Olympics, the city purchased Stonebridge Golf Course. It would be the second public golf course within the city limits. Today, our city is home to a total of 152 acres of public parks, 14 pavilions, 24 playgrounds, two golf courses, 15 tennis courts, 14.5, I don't know how you can have a .5 basketball court, 10 soccer fields, 15 softball diamonds. West Valley's funded the arts and parks via the bonds and has built the Hale Theater, E Center, Fitness Club, Harmon Home Golf Courses, and the Maverick Center. These bonds are paid for out of this general fund for the beautification of our city and recreation of our citizens. There are currently 20 elementary schools, four junior high schools, and two high schools in the city boundaries. More notably, 35% of the population is under 19 years of age, with an additional 16% between 20 and 29 years old. This accounts for 51% of our population that is under 30 years old, many of whom are starting their own families, and I believe his next generation needs a place to meet, a place to find acceptance in the alternative sports. The future population of West Valley is expected to reach 140,000 by 2020. Upcoming projects slated to be built include trail and bike segments, the Van Geter Overpass, park equipment, structure renovation, fitness center equipment, and the City Center Urban Park, which is already being built west of the park I care. All of these are funded by taxpayers, and I strongly believe that the population demand also calls for a skate park for a greater size to be considered. Currently, the proposal for fiscal yield year 2013 for the development of skate park at Centennial Park for the amount of $500,000, which I believe is adequate for the construction of the park. Additional capital investment for 2014 included construction of a skate park on the east side of the city as an accent to the city center. I propose the development of both parks move forward to accommodate the anticipated growth in developed and undeveloped areas of the city. I'd like to note something as well, which I believe is paramount importance. In addition to funding a city skate park, the citizens and skate community can be proud of, I think it's incredibly important that the design and construction of the park be taken in consideration. At some point in the timeline of city skate park construction, it was determined that the passion of skateboarding is a cause for concern and should be monitored. Fences were placed around skate parks to control behavior, a silent statement that crime was somehow already at play. Placing fences around skate parks can send a very distinct and negative message. In doing so, the assumption is made that the participants are more delinquent than soccer players, more truant than football players, or more inclined to vandalize than tennis players. Those include, those inclined to skateboard haven't fallen in traditional sports, but they're recreating amongst peers nevertheless. Like gymnasts or swimmers, they're sharpening a specific and difficult skill. As with football and rugby players, they're encouraging and challenging one another. More importantly, they possess the same heart and desire to perform, no different than any other athlete that gives 100% to their craft. I believe that rules should be enforced so long as they're consistent with other enforced by the city in other organized sports or city-owned parks. If the tennis and basketball courts are lit until 10:00 PM, so should the skate parks. If a skate park is subject to lockdown for graffiti, litter, and vandalism, every park in our city should be held to the same high standards. For more than 35 years, skateboarding has gained momentum in mainstream society. More than 20 million people around the world skateboard, with major, with majority continuing to grow each year. Along I-15, you can find at least three blowboards that feature skateboarders, so worthy of the city investment as any other sport. And citizen demand calls for it increasingly. With the growing number of kids hooked on video games and non-recreational activities, we as a city should be championing any sport that gets kids outdoors and active. I feel incredibly strongly that this time has come to follow suit for those 50-plus cities that have chosen to invest in alternative sports and encourage an energetic and positive lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you. We see by your colorful t-shirts, there's a few supporters that are in solidarity with that statement, but we just show a hands, who's here that support Josh's statements there? Couple of few add-ons there at the end. Oliver Staple. Thank you for being here and your continued work and concern for the area. Seeing no other signups for the public comment period, that we'll move on to item nine, which is new business to hear and consider an appeal from Aaron Falk of the Salt Lake Tribune. So, Mr. Pyle, do you want to introduce that process for us now?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I'll try to do that simply and without a whole lot of fanfare. This is only the second time that we've had one of these appealed to the council level, so I apologize if I don't do this in a very formal manner, but I think I can handle this and get us moving along fairly quickly. Mr. Falk from the Tribune has appealed the denial of his grandma request. This has happened twice, first in his initial appeal, I'm sorry, his initial request through the police department, and then the first appeal, which is made to my office. I upheld the police department's denial, and then the appeal was made to you as a city council. Just for a little bit of background information on how that will conduct, and also an answer to one of Mr. Falk's requests through the correspondence that we got from him. Mr. Falk had requested that we hire outside legal counsel to represent the city. We did not do that, but what we have done is we actually have used this mechanism in a number of other situations in the past, as we've erected what in the legal community they call the Chinese wall between two of our attorneys within our attorney's office. Mr. Eric Bunderson, who is sitting at the table behind me and is the city's attorney, will represent the city council in any interest or advice or whatever you may need or request for purposes of this appeal or this matter. Whereas Mr. Clint Gilmore, who currently works in our prosecutor's office, is going to advocate the PD's position or the appeals position on the side of that question there. And never the twain shall meet in terms of the whole Chinese wall concept. They have not discussed this, and they have maintained a separation there. I also, for my part, having been the first level of appeal, won't be commenting or taking part in the discussion other than just do this, introduce, and whatever kind of logistical need we may have. There was one other point I wanted to make sure I brought up, and I'm kinda missing it. Can't remember what it was right now. But, Mr. Falk, did you have somebody else that was here with you that you wanted to introduce?
Yeah, this is my colleague, Carlisle, who is here to answer questions, or however you guys want to see where it's...
Okay, very good. And that did actually remind me of the one other point ahead. Go ahead.
I may also be pressing the council.
Okay. And then the one other matter I just wanted to ask is, Mr. Bunderson, is there anything from a procedural standpoint that you wanted to or needed to point out as we proceed forward? How would you like this to proceed in terms of presentation?
Sure. The council's free to, under our ordinances, to handle the hearing however they want. My recommendation would be to handle it somewhat like an appeals court type hearing, where you would allot a certain amount of time to each party and then allow them to split it up however they want. If Mr. Falk wants to open and save five minutes for Mr. Carlisle, or if he wants to save five minutes for rebuttal after Mr. Gilmore's presentation, that's all allowable. So it's really very much up to the council how they wanna do it, but that, I think that would be, that would be my advice on how to proceed procedurally.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Bunderson. That seems to fit fairly generally with how we've seen other proceedings of this matter go forward in the past. So let me ask Mr. Falk this. How long would you like to have from a presentation standpoint?
You know, I think I could make, I was hoping to make a just a quick opening statement. I believe you all have documentation that we sent in advance. If I can just hit on a few points that to emphasize some what is in the supporting documents, and then I guess if it's headed over to, I'm sorry, my name is Clint.
Mr. Gilmore, yeah.
Mr. Gilmore. And then if we get reserved for rebuttal at the end.
Sounds good. So what do you think, 10 minutes, 20 minutes? Got any idea?
I mean, I'd probably make my openings in less than five, and then we give 10 minutes for rebuttal.
All right, well, why don't we just plan on that, and then we'll let Mr. Gilmore speak. Go ahead, Mr. Carlisle.
I'd better clarify, we don't anticipate calling any witnesses. If the city anticipates calling witnesses, we'll need some time to ask some questions to those witnesses and...
Let me ask Mr. Gilmore that question. Were you planning, okay, all right. So they're not planning on doing that either. So we'll do, we'll proceed that way. Let's say 10 minutes to start, Mr. Gilmore, 10 minutes, then we'll let you rebut or bring any other information, same with Mr. Gilmore. Does that sound acceptable to the council, or would you like it run in another way?
You know, I, I think that that was what we had in mind and how we've handled a situation like this in the past, to have it, but then, you know, I think what we'd like to do is once kind of the arguments are out there, is just to have both parties be available for any questions from the council.
Okay.
So with that, yeah.
Good.
Is there any other input on this, on procedure of the council here then, or?
Other than I think I'd like to have our attorney come sit up here where we can see him.
Okay. No objections to that.
Not hiding behind the chair.
And I don't, for myself, I'm not particularly worried about time.
Right.
Just let's hear what has to be said and.
And I'm not trying to limit either, I'm just trying to get a general feel.
I mean, realizing that the longer we have to sit here, right, so.
I'm, I'll be, I'm, I'm well aware of the importance of your time, so I appreciate it. Counsel, like, we're here, we're asking for records pertaining to Josh Powell, who in the two years and four months since his wife's disappearance has been the sole person of interest, at least, at least made public by, by your police department. This is a request that the Salt Lake Tribune has not made before in this time. It wasn't until February of this year when Josh Powell set fire to his home in Washington. In that fire, his two sons were killed, and Mr. Powell also perished, and, and with him went any chance that he will ever be prosecuted criminally in this case. But what tonight is about is the public records laws of this state, and since that's something that we probably don't all deal with every day, we could just hit on a few points here. First of all, a record is to be presumed public. You cannot presume that a record is not public and then seek validation for that perspective. Secondly, we've been twice tonight, this request, as Mr. Falk mentioned, but with each level of, of appeal, we are entitled to a, to a review, a new, and I imagine there are a lot of documents in, in this case file, I'm not privy to that, but, and I apologize, but unfortunately, that means you guys have to do your own work on, on this level as well. The law and the court rulings also hold that, that I'm entitled to a fair and impartial hearing, and while you are representatives of, of this city, I don't feel you can give more weight to, or consideration to, to the police or to the city's interests than to what the Tribune has to say. If, if you find the records in question meet the definition under grandma of a private record, you are not obligated to, to stick with that classification. Grandma makes clear that municipalities can release protected records if they see there's a public interest. In fact, I believe your city's own code has, has similar language, and your city's own policy boasts of transparency above and beyond the minimums required by the state's law. This case means a great deal to the people of, of the state and of the city. These are people who spent a, a lot of time posting flyers, who, who have shed a lot of tears over this, who have, who have contributed aid through tax dollars. And we, we've asked, we've never received an estimate as to how much has been spent on this case, we don't expect an answer to that tonight, but I, I believe the people of, of the city are entitled to a, a general idea of how, or of how that money was spent, and that would be through, through these records. Finally, if, these points notwithstanding, and my argument's not, if you see fit, after, after fair hearing and a good faith review, that these documents are, some of these documents are protected, we would ask that we have a discussion as to redaction or, or a way of segregating some of the documents that, that may, that apply to the, the case that remains active, but might no longer be protected because they don't apply to the deceased Mr. Powell. Those, I mean, those would be my basic points, so you have my supporting documents with, with codes cited. I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Gilmore. Mr. Gilmore? Mr. Gilmore, I apologize.
Don't mind being called Mr. Bunderson. Most people don't know who I am anyway, I'm a prosecutor. My name's Clint Gilmore, I'm the Assistant Chief Prosecutor for Urifying City, was recently given that title. I am also the Police Legal Advisor. I've had that title for less than a year. I reviewed the appeal letter that was given, and I believe that's the documentation that you've been provided. I don't know if there were any attachments to that, but I had a six-page review or appeal letter that was forwarded to me, I believe by Ms. McKendrick, that I, was forwarded to me yesterday afternoon, that I've had a chance to review. Is that the documentation that you have as well? All right. In response to the, to the letter made by Mr. Falk, a couple of things. Number one, it's true that the disappearance of Susan Cox Powell has generated significant media interest. It's also understandable in light of the events that occurred on February fifth of this year, that media interest in this case has intensified. It's also true that he put in his letter that West Valley City has a long and rich history of being more open than state grandma laws require. We try, we strive for transparency in our government, we strive for transparency in the activities of the police department. Transparency, transparency in government has its value as it relates especially to public trust. However, in a departure to the tone and substance of Mr. Falk's letter, I believe it's worth emphasizing that the investigation being conducted by the West Valley City Police Department is about the disappearance of Susan Cox Powell. We still need to know where Susan is, she remains missing, and the West Valley City Police Department remains engaged and committed to the thorough investigation of her case. We want to know what happened there and pursue any evidence that leads us to anyone who might have been criminally involved in her disappearance. This investigation is not the Josh Powell investigation. This is not the Josh Powell case, our, our case is about Susan, and she remains our focus. West Valley City Police Department recognizes the rationale behind the public's interest in Susan's case and including the media interest, and I guess tonight we're here to respond specifically to the statutory requirements or the statutory presumptions under grandma. Grandma, some people call it grandma, grandma, it stands for the Government Records Access and Management Act, that's what grandma stands for. You know, I don't know how long, I am a resident of West Valley City, I recognize a couple of new faces, but I've only been before you a couple of times when I was a brand-new employee about seven years ago, and a couple other times. I don't normally appear in these kinds of settings, I'm usually in court, but grandma, so I'm not sure how familiar you are with grandma, but that's what it stands for, that's what the acronym stands for. West Valley City Police Department supports the rationale behind grandma. We believe not only in the appropriate access to, but the appropriate management of government records, and I think that's an important distinction to make. Grandma is about both ideals. It's not just about access, give us access, give us access, it's also about the management of those records, management of the access to those records. And sometimes those two ideals can conflict with each other, depending on what the objective is of those, of those reports and documents. So I'm hoping you're aware that grandma is a state law, it's not a federal law, it's a state law, and it's found under Title 63G of the Utah Code. You're going to see some codes cited in that appeal letter. Under Section 63G 2305, a little bit of a lesson, the 63G is the title, 2 is the chapter, 305 is the section, so we generally refer to that as section 63G 2305. Grandma defines what is to be considered protected documents, okay, as opposed to public documents. Certain documents, by their very nature, grandma is outlining management to the access to those documents and defines those documents as protected, meaning we're not just going to release these. And it outlines rationale why it's not going to release those. It's worth noting that it has been and remains the position of the West Valley City Police Department that the records sought by the appellant are protected under 63G 2305. In defining those records, in defining what protected records are, Title 63G says protected records, and then it goes into its subsections and says, hey, these are the different records that are going to be considered protected. In subsection nine of 63G 2305, it states irrelevant part, and you can't see my notes, I have taken out through dot-dot-dot parts that don't, don't deal with the kind of records that we deal with in the West Valley City, and I'm going to read it as though it were just dealing with West Valley City Police Department records. It says, under 63G 2305 subsection nine, "Records created or maintained for..." dot-dot-dot criminal... enforcement purposes, and remember, this is defining what protected records are. So these records are protected if release of the records, A, reasonably could be expected to interfere with investigations for enforcement purposes, okay? If there's an ongoing investigation and the release of these records would interfere with that ongoing investigation, these records should be protected. B, they could, if they could also reasonably could be expected to interfere with enforcement proceedings, criminal enforcement proceedings by statutory interpretation is what we're referring to. So investigation for enforcement, enforcement proceedings, or C, would create the danger of depriving a person of a right to a fair trial in the event that somebody were to be charged, and we were to release these records. The public would be able to consume, it would be open for public consumption, stuff that is irrelevant to the actual case, and if that person's predilection for porn, for whatever it is, could taint a potential jury pool. So it's there also to protect a future person who might get charged in a future criminal proceeding. Four, reasonably could be expected to disclose the identity of a source, is the fourth, the identity of a source, and this could be an individual, or this could be an institutional source, could be a police department that is, we have contacted and they have given us source information, it could be a search engine program, whatever, that leads us to information as we are investigating a case not generally known outside of the government. Why is that important? Well, it's important to protect if it's an individual, it's also important to protect police procedures, which is also covered in E or the fifth reason, that could reasonably be expected to disclose investigative... techniques, procedures... not generally known outside of the government, if disclosure would interfere with enforcement... efforts, right? We don't want people to know how we as a police department necessarily operate on a separate kind of a case, a bank robbery. We don't want people to know that our procedure in dealing with a bank robbery is, this is how many units respond, this is where they will set up to, to watch over the scene, this is the person, this is the level of staff that will be in command of this situation. Under these circumstances, SWAT gets deployed. Now, I recognize that that, that analogy does not relate to this case specifically, but there are, there are things that would be revealed in these police reports that also deal with those types of investigative and procedural techniques that police officers engage in, in cases like this, in a disappearance case. In one of the appeals, in, well, in the first level, the first letter that was drafted by the West Valley City Police Department, they also included Section 63G 2305 subsection 10 that says, "Records for which the disclosure of which would jeopardize the life or safety of an individual," you know, you're also able to consider that as well, and the reason why that becomes important is the burden in this case isn't on West Valley City Police, the West Valley City Police Department or West Valley City, which is a wonderful thing for me as a prosecutor. Generally, I deal with burdens beyond a reasonable doubt, it's something I have to prove, in this case, I don't have to. The burden is on the person who is seeking disclosure of this record. Under 63G 2406, "A record that is classified as protected under 63G 2305 subsection nine may be ordered to be disclosed under the position, under the provisions of section, and at least those, list those sections," and then it says, "Only if the person or party seeking disclosure of the record has established by a preponderance of the evidence that the public interest favoring access is equal to or greater than the interest favoring the restriction of access." And then subsection two of 63G 2406, "A record that is classified protected under subsection 63G 30510," which is that subsection that talks about the potential of if somebody could end up getting killed as a, as a collateral consequence of this, or their life might be in danger, "may be ordered to be disclosed under provisions of this act only if the person or party seeking disclosure of the record has established of a greater standard, clear and convincing evidence that the public interest favoring access is equal to or greater than the interest favoring restriction of access." It is the position of the West Valley City Police Department that the investigation into the disappearance of Susan Cox Powell, this is not about Josh, is ongoing. It is an active investigation. Time is being spent, detectives are assigned, this is something, we are not, it is not a closed case, it is an active case, and therefore, this request, it is our opinion, should be denied.
Thank you. Mr. Falk, did, want to take some time for rebuttal on this?
I think, hold on, it's Nate Carlisle.
Okay.
Thank you. Again, I'm Nate Carlisle, from Salt Lake Tribune. First of all, let me, let me address what he, Mr. Gilmore said about who the burden is on. Again, as Aaron said, grandma makes crystal clear that the burden is on the government to show why the record should not be disclosed, that the default setting on records in this state is that they are presumed to be open. I think what Mr. Gilmore was trying to say is that because the record's been classified as protected, at that point, we would have to demonstrate there's still a public interest in releasing them. We contend that the classification is wrong in the first place, and that these should be public documents. It's only if, in good faith, you come to some conclusion that some or, some of the records aren't protected, at that point, we can make the public interest argument. But first and foremost, we contend that these should be public records. Mr. Gilmore says that this is, I'm sorry, that the investigation being undertaken still by West Valley Police is into the disappearance of Susan Powell, but then he also goes on to talk about what statute says about criminal investigations for enforcement purposes. Well, which one is it? If it's strictly a disappearance case, it's not even heard that a crime would have been committed. They seem to want to argue both sides of that coin there. And also, at this point, I, I'd like to hand out something to the council, if I may approach. I have copies for all of you. Okay, what I've handed you are the cover page, and then all of page twenty, and the first half of page twenty-one, this is the Attorney General's open book, and I, I did check, 2008 was the last time this has been published, has not been updated since, but I observe no pertinent changes to the protected records section. You'll see in there that police records are not listed by the Attorney General as protected, specifically protected records. Now, the Attorney General's book admittedly was meant to summarize the law, but surely, had the Attorney General considered police records in just about any circumstance, be protected records, he would have listed them there. He did not do that. He did not do that. So let me address some other things Mr. Gilmore said. Mr. Gilmore a couple of times referred to media interest in the case. It's not just media interest, it's public interest. I'm only a bet that every member of this council has been stopped by someone in the supermarket, at a ballgame, in church, shopping, where have you, to be, and some citizen has either made some comment to them or made some inquiry, inquiry of you about the Powell And Aaron talked about all the average citizens of the city who have helped look for her. It is far past just media interest in this case. There are honest, average, everyday citizens that have an interest in this matter. Mr. Gilmore talked about how Grandma's also a management tool for records in the state, and that's accurate. Our contention would be that manage is exactly what we're trying to do here. We think that these records are public and they should be managed as such, or in the alternative, if in good faith you find some of the documents are protected, then those documents which should be public should be segregated from there and made public. Right now, we bunch the whole herd as protected, and that does not seem reasonable. And again, I go back to the point made about how this is an effort to try, sorry, that the police investigation is trying to find Susan Powell. Surely then, there must be some records which are now obsolete for those purposes now that Josh Powell is deceased. And I'm just listing some things here. Maybe some of the recorded interviews are now obsolete, that recording interviews with Josh Powell. Maybe some of the lab reports are now obsolete. Maybe, maybe drawn maps or plans of actions are obsolete, but it's, it's just inconceivable that every record which fits the definition of what we've asked for can go directly to locating Susan Powell. And I, at this opportunity, I should point something out. Aaron earlier said we're here to get records on Josh Powell, that's correct, but it's also some shorthand. Our request, which is articulated in the packet we gave earlier, ask for records pertaining to Susan Powell and Josh Powell. So it's not just that we're trying to get Josh Powell documents. Though in the case of Josh Powell, obviously, again, he's not being prosecuted for anything. I don't see how a lot of the records going specifically to Josh could assist in finding Susan if, in fact, you consider that a good reason to protect some records. Okay. What Mr. Gilmore recited was the protected classifications listed in subchapter nine. And let me just address a few of those. We've spent most of our time on nine A, which I think both parties agree is probably the one which most directly goes to the issues here. You know, I've addressed those again. Moving down the list through the rest of chapter nine, and those are recited in Aaron's opening remarks that he handed out earlier. The issue of a fair trial, again, Mr. Josh Powell's not going to be tried for anything. And I think it's presumptive at this point to assume that anybody is ever going to be charged for a crime connected to Susan Powell. If you read, read the search warrant, which we've attached as documentation, the search warrant that was released in Washington State, there is only one person ever discussed in connection with Susan Powell's actual disappearance, and that was Josh Powell. There is discussion of Susan Powell's father-in-law, but only as it pertains to pornography and voyeurism charges in Washington State. The actual disappearance itself, again, only Josh Powell's discussed. So I think it's presumptive to think at this point that anyone's ever going to be charged with a crime, which would eliminate some of the jury pool concerns, even if for the sake of argument, we say that someone's going to be charged with a crime related to Susan Powell, there are still jury pool protections a judge in court can undertake through what's called voir dire, which is jury questionnaires to weed out people who've been paying too much attention or have already made up their minds about the case. Jurors can be sequestered, I mean, they can move the trial to another county, bring in jurors from another county, what have you. And besides that, I mean, let's face it, a lot of stuff's already been written about this case in the first place. I think it's, doesn't make sense that we have a lot more concerns about tying jury pool. The, the subparagraph in chap, in paragraph nine about police procedures, I, I think it's somewhat presumptive to think that we're going to learn something in these documents that the average person can't figure out. For that matter, we already know a lot about the procedures that have been implemented here. We know a GPS device was fixed to Josh Powell's car, and that was tracked for many weeks or months. We know computers were seized and searched, and even encrypted documents were retrieved from computers. We know the interviewed witnesses, we know they traveled to remote locations, conducted systematic searches. I just don't see how that's an applicable statute here. Let's see. Okay. Life and safety of a witness not generally known by the public. Remember, there's the key word reasonably all throughout paragraph nine. You have to reasonably have concerns that this could be an issue. I don't think it's reasonable that we'd be concerned about witness retaliation at this point. Again, Josh Powell's dead, his only supporters to the best of anyone's, has been able to find supporters of him are all in Washington State, whereas the presumed crime occurred in Utah. I just see no likelihood of any witness retaliation here. Okay. And I'm gonna, okay, well, that concludes my rebuttal on this, this goes for paragraph nine. I would go ahead and say one other thing about the cost issue. Like Aaron discussed this a little bit with, we've asked many times for some sort of accounting of how much money has been spent on this. We've not been provided one, we don't know if one exists. I take the point that, you know, you can't keep the calculator running every time a detective picks up the phone and calls someone for an interview. But I think that we can get a reasonable description of all the resources that were put into this case if these documents are made public and the West Valley citizens can learn a little bit more about how the police resources were spent. Yeah, I'll take any questions, otherwise I'll end my rebuttal at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Want us to all stand up there?
If, just whatever's quickest for you to get up there, I said.
I'll sit on the front row if it's.
Yeah. So quick, and I think it's at this point, if we just, if you have questions of either party.
Yes, I have a question, actually, I have comments, yeah. I listened to Nate Carlyle, is that right? Yeah. You disagree with me to Gilmore about the public interest is weight heavy than media interest, the press interest, correct? Right?
I'm saying it's not just media interest in the case.
So I think just by, pardon me here, I think by just way of procedure, if you have a question for someone, let's have them come up to the microphone.
Yeah.
So, so with our recording devices and for future, we have everything documented and recorded, and, and so councilors, I think if you have a question, call this person up and.
Can you restate the question?
Okay. My question, you disagree with Mr. Gilmore, is the public interest weighed more than media interest?
Yes, I do. I think it's much broader than media interest, and the average citizen has an interest in this case and would like a little more accounting of what the police learned and what they found in this case, and how they went about investigating the case.
Okay. And you also, you mentioned about people are still looking for Susan Powell, correct? Because I wrote that one here.
Yeah, I don't dispute that the police are still trying to find Susan Powell.
Yeah. So therefore, boiled down to this argument tonight, is Mr. Gilmore is right, because this one is still ongoing, active case. So that therefore, he will not release this case out to public.
The statute doesn't talk about ongoing and active. It talks about whether the release of documents could reasonably interfere with the investigation.
Yes, but you also mentioned about people are still looking for Susan Powell. So that mean this case still on active. And on active, but it's based on sixty-three G dash two three zero five, that mean cannot release this record. That's the bottom line.
If you're talking about the strict length of the statute, again, active and open is not in that statute.
Well, that, that's my comment for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlyle, while you're there. Just for future reference, giving us a page or two of somebody else's summary of the law that's available to us is not persuasive at all. In fact, makes me feel like, not only do I not get the book, I don't get the Cliff Notes, I just get a little bit that you want me to know, and it's frankly insulting, just for future reference.
Okay. I apologize. I only have one copy of the book, you're welcome to review my copy if you like.
The book means nothing to me either.
Okay.
Somebody else's summary of the law. We can read the law and we can decide on the law.
Okay. With respect, I would argue it's, it's the Attorney General's.
I understand that. Thank you.
Does counsel have any need of, any questions for any of the either side here?
I have questions for Mr. Gilmore.
Mr. Gilmore, how many pages of documents are we talking about? How many hundreds?
I, I don't have it.
Well, who knows? Who looked at these and said, this document needs to be protected, this document needs to be protected, this one's okay, this one needs to be protected?
Let me clarify a couple of things. I know that even the, there are multiple search warrants and search warrant affidavits that were a part of the original request by the appellant, Aaron Falk. Those are actually in the custody of the district court, the district court still has those under seal. Those alone, just those documents, not the police reports that were created, are in the hundreds. If you.
Let me stop you there. So those documents are not available to us to release?
They are under sealed by the district court as of today's date.
And what would have, what would we have to do to access those documents to have them released to the public?
The, the court would have to make a determination about those documents on whether or not that, a similar kind of analysis.
So who, who would make that motion to the court?
An interested party, in this case, the Salt Lake Tribune.
Okay.
And in fact, if this, if the, if this were to appeal, to be appealed one step further, it would be, this grandma request would also go to the district court.
Right. But we're now talking about one set of documents that's under seal and other documents that are not under seal by the district court, is that correct?
These documents are grandma documents, these are police reports. They, these are not court documents, they are West Valley City.
Then let's not talk about the court documents.
The only reason I bring it up is because you're asking about the numbers of documents, and I'm saying, hey, there's lots of documents.
Yeah, so I'm sure there are lots of documents.
Hundreds of pages.
In the world.
No, related to this case.
I'd like to know, Mr. Gilmore, how many documents are we talking about that are responsive to the grandma request?
In that number of the documents, I can, I can get back with you with an answer.
How many boxes, how many reams, how many folders, how many documents are we talking about? Has anybody determined that?
No.
When we're, we're denying the request, we don't know what, we haven't looked at the documents and said, hey, this, we can't release this, or nobody's made that determination?
Well, the determination, the determination is being made based on the fact that it is an ongoing investigation, and this is why. If I am a person who gets charged with a crime, if I know what the state knows already prior to getting charged with the crime and being interviewed in conjunction with an investigation about a crime, that puts me at a, a great advantage and the state at a great disadvantage in conducting that investigation. Now, when we're talking about this ongoing investigation and the documents that are generated, it is, the case file is, is large.
How large is the case file?
You know, I, I'll have to get back with you to.
Well, this is the time set for the hearing, we're going to decide tonight whether we release these documents, and you're saying they shouldn't be released, and you haven't looked at them as far as I can tell, and nobody knows how many documents there are?
I haven't reviewed all of the documents we have.
I don't, how many, how many pages are involved in this specific police report? I don't have.
How many detectives do we have selling approximately?
It's very big, several, several, two or three to six or seven.
And speaking, documents are being created almost on a daily basis in, in reference to this case.
Well, I don't think we have to release future documents that haven't been created yet, do we?
But you're asking me to put a number on something that.
Well, in response to the grandma request, which was made some time ago, how many documents are we talking about?
No, I'd have to, I'd have to come back.
Of these numerous documents, the number of which we do not know, how many of these documents have been determined that if they were released, they would interfere with enforcement of the law, either by percentage or by number of documents? Has anybody, how many of these documents would interfere, that's your defense, with the enforcement of the law?
It would, it would be our defense with the enforcement of our, or our criminal investigation, the.
I'm going to ask you about each one of these, because I want to know specifically, how many documents would interfere with the enforcement of the law? That's your, one of your defenses.
It would be our position that any and all documents would interfere with the ongoing investigation.
And who reviewed any and all documents and made that determination for each document?
The lead detective, on, can I say that?
Investigative team.
The lead person, or can I say his name?
Lead detective.
Lead detective and investigative team. And the investigative team is Phil Quinlan. Whenever I spoke with Detective Quinlan about this, he indicated that any and all documents could potentially jeopardize the ongoing investigation.
And of these numerous documents, the number of which we do not know, did you just say would interfere with investigation?
Yes.
That wasn't my question.
Okay.
One of your bases was the enforcement of the criminal law, the other basis was investigation. Are these things separate or are they combined?
So you're asking me the enforcement of the, of criminal proceedings?
Yes. As you spoke to us, I wrote down notes, you said one of the reasons we can't release them is if they would interfere with enforcement of criminal proceedings, I wrote that down. You said one of the reasons would be they would interfere with the investigation.
Right. Because you're saying enforcement of law.
Well, so how many, so Mr. Quinlan.
Criminal proceedings, any of them.
Said all of them would interfere with the enforcement.
Yes, your honor, I mean, yes, sir.
Your honor is fine. With respect to the investigation, how many of these numerous documents, my number or percentage, have been determined to, if they were released, would interfere with the ongoing investigation?
All of them.
And that determination was made by whom?
By the investigative team.
And you're telling me tonight that after the grandma request, somebody looked at every page of these numerous, numberless, countless documents and decided every page would interfere with the ongoing investigation?
What I am telling you is that the way that police work works is that you do not reveal what it is that you know to a potential target of a criminal investigation. You do not know ahead of time what piece of information that you have obtained from whatever source will end up leading to criminal charges based on an investigation. You just don't know.
Thank you for that statement, however, it was not responsive to my question.
Please state it again, because I want to be.
Well, I, I'm asking you, how many of these documents were determined?
All of them, all of them.
And that's what you're telling me, I understand.
That is what I'm, that is what I'm.
Of these numerous, numberless, countless documents, documents without number, how many were determined that they would disclose a source and jeopardize that source? Certainly, the source doesn't appear on every page of every document.
Certainly, it does not.
So how many of these were determined in the grandma request review that they cannot be released because they would disclose a source that needs to be protected?
We did not number them by each subsection.
How much by percentage or?
We did not.
Any, any, any way at all that we can judge, we need to protect these documents to protect a source? How are we supposed to judge that?
How are you supposed to judge whether.
That's your defense. These documents should be protected because they would disclose a source. I'm asking how many documents need to be protected?
And what I'm saying is all of the documents need to be protected, and that we have not done. done an individual, line-by-line breakdown of each of the documents based on the subsections of the code in which you were trying to-
Well, so you're not arguing that every subsection applies to every document, are you?
I am, I am arguing that subsection nine A applies to all of the documents.
And subsection nine A is what?
Is interfere with an investigation undertaken for, um, for enforcement.
Since these documents have not been specifically reviewed to apply to each subsection, has there been a determination that there is any other subsection besides nine A that also applies to all of the documents?
They could potentially interfere with enforcement proceedings, they could-
Uh, not, not, please, not potentially. Have you determined, has anybody from the police department determined that there is another subsection that's going to apply to all the documents?
If we could dedicate the resources of, you know, twenty police officers to go through each of these documents, line by line, identify line by line, um, which subsections each of the lines could potentially, um, apply to, that could be contemplated.
Sure, and we don't want to spend the money on that perhaps, but I guess that means the answer is no. We haven't determined any subsection other than nine A applies to all of the documents.
Nine A, nine B, nine C.
And nine B is what?
Enforcement proceedings.
And nine C is what?
Impartial hearing and a fair trial.
So none of these documents can be released without jeopardizing an impartial hearing and fair trial for some as-yet unnamed suspect of some as-yet unnamed crime?
It's, uh-
Not one single document?
It would create the danger of depriving a person of a right to a fair trial, yes. And it could reasonably be expected to interfere with an enforcement proceeding, yes.
What if the Salt Lake Tribune paid the West Valley Police Department to go through these documents and look at each one and decide which ones could be released without, uh, violating any of these subsections? Is there any reason not to release them then?
That would be, it would be awesome if we could have somebody pay for us to go line by line through these documents, um, and then identify for you line by line, um, which sections, um, should still, um, remain undisclosed per the statute.
Let me tell you what I would do if this was a, uh, court matter and I were the judge, which I'll never be. I would take these documents into my office and I would make that review, and I would release every document that could be released. If there was a name on some document that I could scratch out and release the rest, I would do that.
Right.
Is there any reason under grandma that this body could not conduct that review?
Is there any reason?
Is there, is that, is that against the law for this body to do that, acting as judges on this appeal to review these documents or redact them ourselves?
No, sir. You have that ability under our ordinance to review all the documents in camera.
That's all the questions I have, thank you.
It's a pleasure. Any other questions?
Any other questions in the council here either side? Any questions of, uh, Mr. Bunderson, uh, city, city, uh?
Just for clarity, I, and I believe this was understood, but-
Yes, sir.
That in, in the, in the first, uh, request, grandma request, there was a mention of the search warrant, and just so there's no, uh, decision that we have dropped that language, probably understand that that's kind of the jurisdiction of review, so just for clarity.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions here, Mr. Bunderson, on, see, John, I guess I had one, you know, to this, and it, it's, it comes along the, the same line of questioning here with, today Mr. Falk comes up and talks about, well, if, if you see fit to, you know, to uphold the denial, maybe a redacted form or partials could be. But I guess where I start with that is that, is, is the request here, is it, it's for the whole ball of wax or for, is it for whatever we can give them? Sorry.
From what I understand in his, uh, request, he is upfront requesting the whole ball of wax, but then, um, at, at, at the end of his, uh, let's call it a brief, he does say, "If you do find some of them protected, um, then please release the others to us," just as he's made in his argument tonight, um, which, again, you have the authority to do under our ordinance.
And is that the appropriate time or place for a, I guess, an amendment to a grandma request at this point? Because at first it was the whole ball of wax, and now it's, well, whatever, whatever we can get. I mean, does it, would this be the time or place to, to amend that? Because I said, I, I, the thing that I often say is that I try to evaluate each ordinance, each resolution, in this case, each, you know, uphold or denial based on what it is and what it isn't. And so, you know, is it, is it, am I looking at the whole thing or is it, is it amendment appropriate at this point?
And, and it's a, it's an excellent question. Um, the, I, I guess the, the short circuit answer to that is that you have the ability to do that no matter what he asks. He can ask for the whole thing, and you, as the council, can decide to give him part of it back.
Mr. Bunderson, I have a question, please. As far as our deliberations, do they take place now, do they take place in public?
Um, you have five days, five business days to return, um, your decision, and you are allowed, if you've taken in all the evidence, if there is no more, if there are no more questions and no more facts that you need to take in, you're allowed to deliberate in private on this matter.
And are those deliberations closed or are they open?
They're closed.
Are they closed to members of the council that are not in attendance tonight?
That, that's not contemplated by the, um, by the ordinances or the statutes that I've read, um, and I haven't seen any case law on that. I would, I would think probably not, um, just like it's hard to exclude a, a member from, from certain things. Um, but, but that member who's missing certainly could not, um, ask for any more facts. He would be limited to review of the records that we've seen here tonight.
Okay, so if somebody misses a steady meeting, they can still vote at the regular meeting next, next weekend? Is that a review to be determined by a majority vote, four votes?
That's how I would recommend you do it, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, like Councilman Bueller, I, I had some questions in regards to, uh, Mr. Carlyle made, made the comment that it'd be reasonable to release the costs, uh, resources that were used, and those types of things, uh, I, I'm not sure that jeopardizes their, their case, and I know that the public is interested in those things, and, and again, on the same lines, I'm, I'm certain that there's got to be documents, uh, that are not permanent to, um, the safety and, and interference of the investigation and those things. Um, the question is, is, is who's responsible to go through that line by line? I guess that would be our responsibility to do that and make that determination.
You do have the ability to do that, yes.
And do we not have the ability to delegate that to somebody else of the police department?
The ordinance indicates that the council may review the, uh, documents in question in camera. Um, it's silent on whether the delegation can happen. I imagine, um, if that is the council's will, that the staff would make that happen.
And can we delegate the cost?
In terms of-
How much money this is going to cost to review? Someone's going to have to put time in to review these things.
Well, uh, yeah, absolutely, under grandma, you're allowed to, um-
Not just charge for the copies, but charge for the time, going through the records and so forth. And can we make that charge before we, or can we estimate that cost and get a check before we spend five hundred hours reviewing these documents?
We do that all the time, yes.
Thank you.
So this is, I guess, the point in the meeting where, you know, any comments, any further questions or emotions?
I do, yeah. I, uh, Mr. Gilmore, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I do believe this case is on go-on active case, yeah, but I would love to see next time you go prepare more detail, clearer, before you come to the hearing.
Okay.
It'd be awesome.
It, it was one of those things, I thought I was here to argue, um, argue the law, not necessarily argue a bunch of facts, um, and so we'll take that into consideration. And keep in mind, I've been at this job less than a year, and, uh, and I believe this is the second appeal that has gotten to the city council. Um, so with that, um, excuse, I take your, I take your admonishment to heart.
Yeah.
Mr. Gilmore, I think you did a great job. I don't think you should apologize or be embarrassed, or you need to stand up for yourself.
I try, I try. I'm trying to stand up for the West Valley PD.
Don't let anybody browbeat you.
Oh, unless he's a city councilman.
Even then, if you're right, you're right. It doesn't matter who's talking to you.
All right.
As we mentioned to our new employees, this would be a place of definite learning. We give you those opportunities, so.
That, that's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
I, I guess one comment that I want to make is that I, you know, I've never felt so inadequate to make a decision on anything in my entire life, whether, I mean, even, even, uh, because, you know, on one hand, we have, uh, the Tribune, which a lot of their arguments are, are based with the word presumptively, and then the city comes back with the, that it's potentially. So I'm trying to weigh whether it's presumptively this or potentially that, and, you know, it's, it's, it, it makes it a tough call, and then the, you know, it basically just comes down to, you know, what, uh, you know, what is the greater public good on this, and is it to, uh, the public's right to know, and, and I, I know the, the hurdle we're trying to get over here is, is equal to or greater than, and, you know, with potentially versus presumptively, you know, it's, you know, it's fairly equal, but I guess the one thing that gives me some solace in all this is that, you know, I know that there is, uh, with open records and with, uh, court cases and trials, that there are, uh, active, uh, procedures, checks and balances, and, uh, internal, external reviews, and, and how they could run their course. And so I also worry about, I guess, getting into, upsetting any of these checks and balances or, or reviews that, uh, that in my mind would be the greatest detriment to, to public good, and so, I mean, I, I guess I'm just kind of talking out loud here to settle my points, to maybe just, you know, spur on, uh, some of yours or, or a motion of, of how you best would think that it would be in our best interest to proceed, and, and so, Councilman Christiansen?
We've, we've made some suggestions here. Let, let me just flat out ask, Mr. Falk, would the Tribune be willing to pay the estimated cost of going through all these records? Numberless, countless records?
Bottomless C. Uh, that question is, is certainly far above my pay grade. Um, and-
And mine.
If, uh, I believe if you, if you came, obviously, I mean, our hope would be that, that it could be done without that. Um, if you had to come back with some sort of cost estimate, that would certainly be a, a great start for, for us. I mean, I, I can't write chip link check. You would, it would balance.
Well, I, I, what I'm saying is, you know, if the, the council comes back and says, "Yes, but we need to re, go through and redact," and, and that will be a cost, and we come back with a, an estimated cost, would-
I, I think that-
Would you want to carry it that far?
I, 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 I believe so, but I, I could not speak with absolute certainty. I, I don't have, I simply don't have the authority within my, uh, company. Um, but I, I know it is of great interest, uh, to both public and, and to media, which we are a part of, we're, we're average citizens as well. But, uh, I, I believe that would be, uh, something to consider very, very seriously for my, for my speakers. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we set a time and place for deliberations. I would suggest that it take place at the conclusion of this meeting, since we only have five days.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay, so a motion is second.
Can I ask one?
Yeah, discussion, two other questions.
So can we outside of this forum get that information from the police of approximately the number of papers, approximately how much man hour will take? Because as our responsibility, I don't think it should be the citizens of West Valley that pay for that cost of going through all those documents. So we can get that outside without them and then just give them the estimate?
Yes.
That's appropriate? Okay.
Well, well, I'd like to make a comment there. Whether it's possible is a que, one question. Whether it's appropriate is a whole nother question.
Appropriate, yeah, for us to get that information.
Yeah, which I would, I would ask you, if we're going to have this deliberation, um, in a closed session or closed discussion, that would be the place to discuss that.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor to, uh, go into deliberations immediately following business of the day. Is there any discussion to that motion for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the question on that. Ms. McKendrick, we do a roll call, oh?
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bure?
Aye.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Christiansen?
Yes.
Interfere too much?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and we'll continue these deliberations on, and thank you for your, for your time on this. And, Mr. Bunderson, is there any other directions that we need to give to the applicant or to the city representative as, as we proceed with this?
May I ask what, go ahead. Does that mean you anticipate an announcement tonight, or what's the procedure?
I think we're going to reserve our, I guess, our five days on this, and, I mean, I can't speak for the rest of how it's going to go, so, I mean, it could be thirty seconds, it could be five days, so.
I think our timing is part of our deliberations.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and, well, I, I mean, would that mean potentially there's another hearing scheduled or you announce your decision, or we get no, no mail?
We've got all the facts, right? We won't be taking any more, any more facts on this, and so, is there a point where we have to come back into an open session to, to vote on it, or anything to that point?
What you're required to do after deliberations is issue an order, um, which I'm, I'm happy to help you prepare.
But, uh, do you want to say thank you to Mr. Falk? I mean, so Mr. Carlyle is tonight, yeah, passing to come here and go to pursue this case, after we say that very much.
Thank you, and thank to all of you. Maybe just this more clip, does that mean we should stick around tonight?
Yeah, you know, like, it's-
You win?
It's, it's, it's certainly your right to, and, you know, or there's plenty of places across the street to entertain yourself, or, but, I mean, it's, it's really your call.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have item ten is, yeah, yeah, well, well, we have some, uh, exciting consent agenda items on, uh, city managers' appointments to various committees across the city, and a motion on those consent items would be appropriate at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion this second to approve the appointments of the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that would first be unanimous. Uh, no need for executive session?
No, sir.
Okay? Then this body will stand adjourned?
I'll call and order the special meeting of the RDA. Note that roll call has been taken and Member Winder is absent. We have had an opening ceremony, we have one resolution before us. Uh, Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. Uh, we have with us this evening, Mr. Maury, who is going to, uh, give you a description and go through some steps that we are contemplating, uh, upon the board's approval or the agency's approval to initiate an urban, urban renewal survey. This is in the fifty-six hundred west, thirty-five hundred south area, which you know probably better as where the old Albertson's grocery store is and the Rite Aid drugstore was, also previously the Salvation Army, the current, the Sears, the Kmart, all of those, uh-
Kmart is still there.
Kmart was there, was gone, now it's back. Yes, so we've had quite a bit of turnover in that area. So anyway, uh, this step would be the first in a series, if it, if the agency is so disposed to, to move it along towards redevelopment goals and, and plans and projects that we give it off later.
Mr. Maury, on a much lighter note, um, one of the responsibilities we have within economic development, of course, is to not only bring businesses to the community, but to be evaluating what's going on in the community and which areas may or may not need our attention. And I'm sure that you all are aware, like we are, that this is a key intersection in our community, right there at Thirty-Fifth, um, South and Fifty-Sixth West. And there's a lot of activity going on to the north end of that with the development of Target and all the retail around there, and we're beginning to notice quite a bit of transition right around the Thirty-Fifth South, Fifty-Sixth West, um, intersection, as Wayne's already commented. We've got some transition with Kmart, um, and Sears. There's some of the other retailers right around there are going through that same process. So we just wanted to take a closer look at that, and one of the, one of the important steps that we take, we can informally go out as staff and just look at whatever we want to, but if the potential were to exist in that area for some kind of a redevelopment area or for redevelopment opportunity- for redevelopment opportunity that we feel or you feel is appropriate for us to be engaged in, the first step is that we designate a survey area. And so the map that you see before you just represents a large area excluding any residential where we think we ought to look. The map does not suggest in any way that all of that area has an issue that we need to look at, but it's better at the beginning to take a broad brush and to look at as much as possible so that you can determine, should we scale it back? Is there anything that should be done here at all? Is there anything that we've missed? So what the survey area resolution does is it allows us to engage a consultant to begin to look more deeply into what's happening in that area. And so that's what's before you tonight.
And at the point that you engage a consultant, you come back with another proposal to the authority to then spend money for that?
No, basically, what this does, we've already, the city has, you know, several groups that we work with in a situation like this. We go out initially and say, this is an area that we're kind of concerned about, what are your thoughts? And that person has helped us draft this map just to kind of make sure that we're on the right page. They've estimated what some of the costs could be to go through that process, and so by adopting this resolution, we would go ahead and allow that person, that company, to begin the research, so that at some point we could bring that back to you and say, yeah, we have an issue here, or no, we don't. Everything looks like it's moving away a lot, too, and there's no reason for us to be involved.
Because I know there's no fiscal impact on the...
No, there would be. I mean, the survey analysis that they do, you know, will probably cost somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000, and they've estimated those costs. So it just depends on the level of detail that they have to go through or what they find, and we kind of have an estimate of that, and we would begin to, once you've adopted this, we would begin to cost out what those fees include and what needs to be done.
The main purpose of this is just to set the boundaries?
That's correct, exactly right.
As far as the boundary goes, I'm just curious, if you moved that eastern line down to 5200 West, keep going down to the south, then Wayne's house would be inside this. Yes.
Well, and I know you were joking, one of the key elements of what we want to do, though, is to not include residential, and so we've tried to make sure that we have done that.
Well, area overlap, I'm sorry, Steve, go ahead. No, you go ahead. I was just going to, how does this overlap with the Hunter Town Center plans?
Very close, actually. It includes a lot of the same area.
So I want to talk about this, and I'll laser you here. So this is the interchange on the Mountain View corridor?
That's correct.
Here, the spotted one. So we've actually included the restaurant, as well as the shoe store, kind of in the study area, even though that one day it will be an intersection?
That's right. I mean, just because we want to look at all that property and determine what's going on, what's happening, we recognize that that's a key intersection, especially once the Mountain View corridor is completed, because it'll be one of the main entrances off of that corridor into West Valley City. So we want to get a look at everything around that.
Okay, and then with that, I mean, I can appreciate the fact that we're trying to keep residential out of it, but, I mean, with these houses that have frontage right on 35th South, I mean, since it's a study area, would it might not be a good idea just to at least include that in? As a study, I know other study areas that we've put into. It seems like there's been a street here and there, or maybe a handful of residences that we thought, anyway, your thoughts?
Well, the redevelopment law has been, has really been restricted so much that what we're contemplating here, if anything were to happen at all, you're talking more about an urban renewal area and not a redevelopment area. And so in that case, excluding residential is essential. I mean, you know, we don't, we're not allowed really to consider that. You're talking about commercial office space, that kind of space, and what the redevelopment need or opportunity is.
The one thing I'm worried about, when you talk about residential, is, again, that same line I was referring to on the eastern side, although their homes aren't in that, their property, because most of those have agricultural property that will fall in that space, so maybe their homes won't, but their backyard property that is where they keep their horses and those items, that area certainly falls in that area. And so I know all those people on that road are not going to be happy campers, just like they weren't happy when we presented the Hunter Town Center.
Do you know the zoning of, I mean, this used to be the nursery at some point, you know, I mean, do you know the zoning on these off-chairs?
No, honestly, I really don't. I apologize. I don't know if Nicole does.
Right. Right now, that particular parcel is zoned commercial. It's zoned the lowest commercial, which is C1, so it's kind of in a holding zone specific to that site right now. It has been zoned that way for quite some time.
I'm wondering why, I understand the area that is of concern, is the old Sears and whatever is over there, but the area that's drawn is double that, and I'm wondering why it goes so, going to the east side of the road, and why it goes so far to the south?
Well, I understand, again, the survey area resolution is just the area that we're looking at, and part of being able to evaluate what's happening in an area is to be able to look at the surrounding property as well. I mean, for example, we started looking at that, at this, just primarily because of some of the things that we saw happening in around the Sears/Kmart site. But now we're noticing that some of the retail property to the south of that intersection, to the south of 35th South, is also in transition as well. And I think that's just, it's a key opportunity for us to look at everything that's going on around there to determine, I mean, redevelopment is most productive when we're proactive. I mean, if we wait until something negative has happened, it's much harder to be responsive or to make an effective change. And so if we can look at everything right now and determine, maybe it's headed in a positive direction and doesn't need anything from us, but if we miss that opportunity, it'll be much harder in the future to kind of take it back.
Then is this, the next step after this would be a blind hearing?
Well, what we would do is, if we determined that there was a need, we would come back and we would define what the actual, for example, urban renewal boundary was to be at that point, and we would have another discussion about, do we agree? Are we talking about the right area? What's the purpose of the redevelopment area?
So then, just because this is the study area, this is not necessarily...
That's exactly right.
Fixed in stone? This isn't going to be the area for anything else that we consider?
That's exactly, I mean, we may come back to you in, you know, a month or two and say, everything's great, nothing needs to happen at all. Or we may come back to you and say, this one little corner needs our attention.
And how long, and how long you're going to come back? My question is, how long can you come back and let us know about this project you have been studying?
You know, we haven't set a timeframe. Usually, especially with a project like this, we're anticipating that sometime in the next couple of months, we'll have a better feeling of what's happening, and we would start to define if there was a project area or not.
Tom and Steve, if I could add in real quick, and sorry to interrupt you there, Steve, and, Steve, I just wanted, sorry, using the full name, just to differentiate in my own little mind there, just to get a comment in before we move on, I just wanted to make the point that a couple or more of you may not have been here the last time we did one of these and started a study and surveying for actually enacting an RDA or a redevelopment area, per se. And these processes do take a long time. I'm glad Keith mentioned a couple of months, could be more than that, depending on the size of the geography, and the survey could take a long time. And then the steps after that take a long time as well. So this will be an ongoing process over a number of months. The other comment I wanted to make on the geography was, and Keith actually made good commentary about the differing areas and the different levels of development or need for redevelopment, but going specifically to Steve's question, I just wanted to point out that a lot of those parcels there, south of 35th and 56th, I know that the Kmart and Albertson's and all that have been kind of what have really sparked our interest in going, but most of those parcels in that area, the acreage that's shown there, is in as bad or worse shape than that corner is.
And I was just going to make a comment, that on the south side of 35th and west of 56, where the Blockbuster is now going out of business...
Correct.
That strip mall is not what you would call...
Driving.
One of the greatest pieces in the city. To the east of 56 West, though, and, you know, it's mostly open land, it's agriculture, it's horse property, it's, so... But even on the north side of 35th and east of 56, there's some vacant properties that are along there as you go, as you move east. So it's kind of that whole intersection is, and, you know, and that's what we're trying to do, is to look at an area. And I think the tool, the redevelopment tools have been well-used in the city, they've been used in the appropriate manner, I don't think they've been misused or mismanaged. I think we can look at the redevelopment areas and economic development areas that we've done, and we've seen great benefits as a result of that.
And adding to that comment, Steve, we also know that as beneficial as most, or if not all of those projects have been, as Keith pointed out, you want to get as early a start as you can, because they take years, literally, by the time you start surveying, by the time you actually see redevelopment.
Steve, just one more question. How does this affect the potential of the Bus Rapid Transit platform right in that space, right there, where we're normally talking about, really close to where the Albertson's was, is where we're talking where that platform was going to be? I don't know how that fits into this, or...
Well, I guess the way I would respond to that, and sorry to kind of jump in there, Keith, but I would say the Bus Rapid Transit plan probably will have more effect on survey than vice versa. I don't think the survey is going to significantly alter the design, or at least the concept as UTA holds it for the Bus Rapid Transit line, but the existence of the line certainly will affect the survey and how we conduct it.
Just one thing I'm concerned about, 3100 South and 5600 West, there's a strip mall, a couple of strip malls there, I believe there are now tenants and running out of business. I think it's very vacant right there. And I'm pretty concerned about, if we do more strip malls in this area, maybe we lose some money. You know, I know we try to generate the income into our city, but I'm concerned so many strip malls in that area, between 3100 South and 3500 South in 5600 West.
And I agree, that's kind of what drew our attention to this, is the transition that a lot of those retail spaces are going through. It's not the city's responsibility to become a developer, but what we can begin to do is to evaluate what's good and what's bad, and if we begin to exercise the opportunity that we have as a city, can we make an effective change to help things either stay good or improve? And so that's what we would be looking at, is first of all, what's going on, and is there something we can do to make an effective change? If there's, I mean, if it's okay, we'll step away and we'll give a great report to the city council that everything looks okay. If it's not, it'll be our responsibility to start to make recommendations on what could be done, or how we could get involved to make a good change.
Ms. White?
And the potential on these homes, there's like six homes along 5600 West, so we would maybe make a plan as to what could go in in the future, but not demand them to sell and become commercial? If they want to stay there, they can stay there?
That's correct. The possibility of eminent domain is always just that, a possibility, but it doesn't necessitate it, and that's certainly never been the thrust, even of any of the RDA areas that we've established.
Question, and then I'd make a motion, too. I just wonder, just from my own memory, maybe for the benefit of some of our new trustees, if we could get just the map or the outline kind of of the long range plan for this Hunter Town Center area, just so we kind of know what's kind of the start and the end.
Absolutely.
Might just be a good refresher. And then with that, I think the area looks great, and so I'm excited to get the ball rolling on this, so I'd move approval of resolution 1207.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sounds unanimous. No other business? We'll adjourn, we are done.